Right in the, right in the, uh, the.
Some of work, some of don't. My gosh, get tired tonight.
Yeah, we're all dressed up tonight.
I have to say something's wrong. He gets harassed like that all the time, so.
It's true, he was warm as a bird.
You know, if I take mine, I'd be drinking out of it all day. It's not new.
You guys want to pass heat? What's the water?
I just got water, so she's good.
Uh, yeah, she, I just, I was gonna throw it.
All right, we're gonna go meeting to order, six o'clock. We need a roll call. Ms. Howe?
Oh, here.
Ms. Butler Challenger here, Mr. Wisswasser?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Here.
Mr. Almeri, Mr. Beunz, bless our absence tonight.
All right, number two on our, our agenda would be civil reflections. We're going to do a pledge of allegiance and then a moment's silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have an amendment to the agenda tonight that you can hear.
Okay.
If you look at, uh, under vouchers, if you look at number nine under vouchers, you need to read up to that a little bit. Since we're in the, uh, running two years concurrent next to each other, twenty-one and twenty-two right now, you will be approving two sets of vouchers and you have to approve separately. I would like to see A as approval of vouchers two thousand twenty-one and B underneath that, uh, nine B would be approval of the vouchers two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Is there any other amendments, changes?
Yes. Number, um, number twelve. Chris Hagerman, I guess, is not going to be here and Jason is not here, so we stripped that from our agenda.
So cross off number twelve completely?
Yeah.
Are there any other changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item four is the disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any? Doesn't appear to be. So we'll put none. So we will go through five, which is public comments. Is there anybody? Out of the two of you, is there the one we would like to see? Okay, got it. Good. All right, no public comments this time? Shmell, I think. We'll go to six, so that Adam will have a chance to speak with county, state, federal, or other agencies.
Honestly, I'm good, too. I didn't really have anything to report. I was gonna listen to trustee Almerigi's update of the task force, so I feel a little bit jumped in here. I'll hang out as long as my stomach says, you know, I'm hungry, so.
All right. Thank you ever so much. All right, item seven, consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes.
Item eight is the approval of minutes. Minutes of board trustees' regular meeting. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board trustee meetings on January fourth.
Second.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item nine, A, we're going to approve vouchers for two thousand twenty-one. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve the vouchers for two thousand twenty-one.
Second. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Item B, nine, which is vouchers for two thousand twenty-two.
I'm going to approve the voucher for two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
All right, it doesn't seem to be a treasury form?
Not in that, thank you.
There are two appointments apparently for committees. We have Kimberly Faust, is that correct?
Joe?
Yes, I'm sorry. I guess he's refusing me. So Kimberly Faust, the senior, senior services advisory board, the term expires December thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two because she'll be taking the place. Okay.
Sarah Loomis.
Thank you, because you already know that. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, make the motion, uh, put Kimberly Faust until, for, till December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Mr. Rosecrantz?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Did I read in, and there is Ms. Grant, or did I read in the, and I can't find it right off the top of my head right here? Um, it says their address is Clartrop, but it has an East Lansing address. How is that possible?
It's just on the other side of Upton Road. There's a few houses there that have East Lansing addresses.
Yeah, I got it.
You know where it is?
Huh?
You know where it is?
No, no, I don't know the person.
Oh, well, you know where the houses are. It's on the other side of Upton. You go up to your place and you just go straight and those houses are in East Lansing.
No, I didn't think that. Okay.
Ark Lake is in East Lansing.
Yes, it is. But I didn't think Martin was.
Yep.
Yep.
Five, at least, I think, houses.
I think there's five houses.
I didn't realize that. I look at the parcel number. I don't look at the address.
Well, that makes sense.
Good question, those two.
Well, it just didn't make sense to me, but, you know, I understand East Lansing, but I didn't think about it down there. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Are we ready?
And Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that means Kimberly Faust is now a senior, she's now a member of the senior advisory board. The second one is John Wright Senior, who's sitting here, who, uh, his term went into December thirty-one of twenty, I, two thousand twenty-one. His, oh, his new term.
It's twenty-four.
Don't get too excited now, it's twenty-four. December thirty-one, twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve John Wright for the role committee term's firing on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is twelve. We've removed township committee reports, which would be twelve because of the individuals not being here. So we'll go to thirteen, unfinished business, items of introduction and discussion. A is planning commission evaluation of township-owned properties.
Thank you, Supervisor Howe. So the planning commission is going to be taking up the evaluation of all township-owned properties, I believe, at their next meeting. What I wanted to bring to you was just a discussion item, if you have any preferences for things they evaluate for. I'm sure that they have thoughts of their own on how they'll evaluate these properties, but if you have any ideas of, um, let's say what development district they're in, whether they could be developed in the future, whether they could serve as parkland, um, anything that you might have that contribute to their discussion that I can pass along to them. John, John Wright is sitting here. He's also the vice chair of the planning commission, um, might be of interest to them as they take up their discussion. And if there's nothing, there's nothing, but I thought I'd offer the opportunity for at least you all to have that conversation. Any thoughts?
I, I, I can speak to that a little bit. I would, I would like to see as a end result of, of their overview here, that a catalog of township properties be put together with the, with the proper ID numbers and addresses so that we can use that as an evaluation tool as, as a board in the future. Okay, I think that that will really help us make decisions and, and possibly, for instance, if it is a lift station, increase the property, that it says it's a lift station. Okay, so, and I, you, you would control that sort of kind of whole graph, you know, uh, but that would really be great for our township to have that as a end result.
Okay.
And whoever you would choose to, to, to work on that, you'd think would be us.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I'll detail with what trustee said, um, I would like to see the property value, that it be whatever the property value is of today for selling. If we need to go somewhat below that in order to sell it, that works with whoever the realtor. Now, I, the question is, are we going to be the, is the planning commission going to be the realtor? Are we going to be a realtor or are we going to hire somebody?
Um, that would be a discussion if they determine there are properties that we should sell. That would be a conversation that we will come back and have, um, for you as a board to determine them. But I'm, usually they're sold using a realtor.
Because some of them are landlocked.
Well, we'll hire a professional representation.
That's what I.
We're not going to do that ourselves.
Yes, but there may be, there may be a policy that you put into place, though, that you may offer a landlocked piece of property to, um, the properties that, what that property is a first regulatory.
Sure.
But yeah, so we might create a policy for that, but yes, I believe that we, I would recommend that we would use professional.
Yeah, we won't be doing that ourselves.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, apparently you have B also, so.
Okay, thank you. So what came out recently, um, as of, I believe, last week from the Michigan Townships Association and from the, um, United States Department of Treasury, are some final rules on how the American Rescue Plan Act funds can be used. Um, and so this rule will go into effect essentially, um, at the end of March. And I anticipate that we're going to be having discussions as we move forward, um, on how we use those funds throughout the next few years. One of the biggest ways that they can be used in, um, the handout that you have, um, in your packet, is that you can use up to ten million of it, which I think only one township in the state of Michigan received that much or more, is to, um, use as revenue loss, um, excuse me, loss of revenue. You can use it as revenue to, to replace that. So, um, but there will only be one township in the, in, in the state of Michigan that can use it, um, up to that level. We, of course, could decide to use it as a revenue loss replacement. Um, obviously, we received, I believe, um, half to this point of one point three million and the rest, um, to be deposited at a later time. And Treasurer Wisswasser, I'm sure, will keep us apprised of when that is received. But as we move forward, I wanted you to have this issuance of the final rules so that you could read over, um, the document that comes from the Treasury of the United States is, um, like fifty-seven pages long. So if you would like that version, I can certainly print that out for any of you or send it to you via email, but I, I figured you would appreciate the original version. Um, but we may look to that full version if we have an interest or other questions that we have about different sections of this. So if there's discussion on this now, I think I may have it. If not, it's, it's yours to, um, take a look at and then we'll have some future conversations.
My understanding, I know you said this was.
Okay.
The one point three million we have?
I believe we've been deposited up to half at this point.
You have?
Two hundred and eighty-four dollars, thirty-something cents, or something like that. Actually, we're gonna talk, we're gonna meet tomorrow with Huntington Bank to, um, discuss what other municipalities are doing. I've already set the account up. Um, they have some options you can do with this money, because our, our money's gonna go, um, help me out, Adam, you can tell me, our money's gonna go, there's a couple of different ways you can do this. Our money's not gonna be used very well, so we, we got a couple of different ways of accounting for it, so we can get it covered in.
Right, I believe you have those point twenty-four that you said.
So it makes sense to invest it in a different, a different account, track it separately. Um, the county credit, but all they did, and what other municipalities have done. There's lots of things we can do with it. I'll know more about it. We do have a new public funds, uh, director from Huntington Bank, and he's not new to the bank. He was there, he left and went to Chemical for a while, then Huntington Bank bought him off. He's back now, and our lady Pam Paddle, who we had for many, many years as our Huntington Bank public funds banker, retired December thirty-first. So we'll have, I'm gonna chat in, I don't know, we'll set something up in a few weeks or so.
Okay, as I'm understanding, Adam, jump in, please, to see if there's a difference, that this, these funds can be spent on most anything, only they can't be employees.
Yeah, supervisor, or superintendent Hillenbrand is probably gonna, uh, clarify that, but only if you use the revenue loss program, or do you have substantial flexibility? And the county, originally, when we were looking at it, we thought maybe out of our fourteen million, six million would be eligible for revenue loss. We looked at it again and got it up to about nine million. Uh, we have contracted with Guide House, which is the firm that is actually writing the rules for the federal government, so we're got an insider's look. So I would strongly suggest that you would take advantage of whatever expertise the county has. Uh, Todd Campbell has been our go-to guy as deputy administrator and, you know, if, if, as long as the rules are substantially similar for the townships as they are the county, I would take advantage of Mr. Campbell's expertise on this. And, you know, if, if it's feasible, I would strongly, you know, suggest that the township, you know, use the revenue loss so you have maximum flexibility.
So what they're stating is you have to determine revenue loss in order to, but you have to show that revenue loss?
It, it's a formula that you have to go through, but even, even Clinton County, which, you know, based on our proximity to, you know, Michigan State, state government and our employees and our property, we still found, you know, substantial revenue loss through the formula. I'm not saying that, you know, a, a person looking at you would say Clinton County has a substantial revenue loss impact from COVID, but the way the formula was constructed, we were able to get that.
That's what I, I guess I wanted to do with the revenue loss. Do we have a list? Do we need for us to be able to put that?
So we'll probably work with our accounting staff in order to determine there, there is a, a, a formula which we're able to calculate that loss. But I'm guessing that we would want that to be determined by the, the, what do we account to get.
Yeah, if we'll think it paid for some other credit, okay. Trying to think if there was anything else. I don't, like I said, is it, is there, there are things that we cannot spend it on?
Correct.
But there are things, there's more that we could spend it on than what you can't. Okay. Do we have a list of what we can't?
Well, it's kind of included in this document.
That's what I was looking.
Yeah. So there's a little bit of information on page six. You're in, in, interested in revenue loss. There's information there on the revenue loss. That's okay. Eligible uses, um, some of it, just a few of them that are included here, water and sewer infrastructure.
That we can't.
Broadband infrastructure.
That, that's what we can use it for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll continue through looking at the allowable uses, but, and I think that'll be a, a, a discussion for the board to have, um, in terms of ideas for what, what it can be used on and, oh, and over that time that we can spend it.
Right, okay, thank you.
It's still a work in progress for.
Oh, no question, but there are certain things that they laid down that say you cannot spend it on, but then they tell us what we can spend it on, and that's what we need to look at, which is what.
They're still adjusting this. It's not done yet.
The dollar amount or what you can spend it on?
What you can spend it on, what you can't spend it on.
Well, that's why it's good to wait. But at this point, that's what you have for us, this, okay, no, that's understood. Okay. Now, this one I was a little confused with. Thirteen B, your item for action, your meeting policy of township board commission and committees. Why is that an add, act, item fraction?
Uh, because it needs to be acted on. Um, because our previous policy, which was the electronic games policy, um, all of that information expired through OMA at the end of December. Um, so we need to put into place the new guidelines from MTA regarding the, uh, information for meetings in OMA. In regards to how we are making our meetings electronically available and also stating that from here on out in OMA, the only way that a member of the board can, uh, participate electronically is if they are a member of the military actively and they are not able to be physically present for the meeting.
So from what you've submitted to us, that means that there's nothing worth keeping?
Yes, all, all of that stuff that is redlined, that's all of the stuff that no longer is applicable to OMA. After, after the end of two thousand twenty-one.
No, I, I understand that, but I guess what I'm questioning is whether or not there is anything, for me, let me put it to you this way, for me, items for actions means we need to vote on it. I would like to see, only because that would give me more time to look at it, because there may be some things that we need or that would be applicable, that's, and I can't tell you off the top of my head what it would be, but if we could delay it for until our next meeting, which is what, February?
February seventh.
Seven, definitely. I would like to see that, so that's my, that's my take on it. Because it's like I have used the term, it's like a meeting. That's what we were going through and.
So does that mean that we wouldn't have any rules for any of our committees this month? Would that, would we operate under the old rules until we change?
Um, that would practically mean that we would still operate the same way that we are operating, but we don't have a codified document with the new guidelines.
Okay.
But the, but the states. But we still operate through OMA, so OMA is. But our individual policy that we would still have on handouts of township would not be updated if we waited until February.
So you're saying that you can't update our policy for the first of February, for the seventh of February?
No, I, I'm saying that if we don't vote on it today, then we will not have an updated version until we vote on it in February.
Okay.
Um, would, would, if that's what this board chooses to do, that's fine. We still operate through OMA is what I was saying, OMA is up to date as of.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, the OMA is the open meetings act.
Yes.
So that's clear.
So there is a redlined version and there is a blue version. So in those redlined, in the redlined version, there is text that's been added and that text is, is red and underlined.
Yes.
The only thing that's been eliminated, obviously, is the cross-out marks that had.
Yes, and there are some, um, items that I did add that pertain more to us than what is specifically written in OMA. It just clarifies a few things based on that we, um, we are not required to have a video made available for our meetings, but that we as a board are choosing to have the video be made available. So under OMA, however, that's how it is currently written. That is not a requirement. Um, but I put that in there because that is what we have been doing and we will continue to be doing that, live streaming our board meetings as long as this board chooses to do so, which is reflected in the updated document.
Right, that's part of what I was saying, because we can add to this.
Yes.
Or take it away, whichever way you want. And that's why I would like to postpone it.
Okay.
And look at it in February. That, again, that would be mine. So it looks like, because you have it for items for action, we haven't had a chance to look at it, um, and you're saying that the state is requiring, but you've added some of the things that we've, we've done, which means that we can customize this to what we need. So I'm going to, I'm gonna make a motion. I don't usually do that, but I'm gonna make a motion, um, so that we can delay this until February seventh, and that would give us some time to talk about it. So that would be my motion, so you guys can, is there a second? Not a dies.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, I just appreciate it.
You don't have to thank me for nothing.
I wouldn't say that was nothing. I would say that was pretty courageous. All right, so now we take a vote. Ms. Howe? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, there was any other discussion. So go ahead, yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes.
All right, we are on to new business, items for introduction and discussion. Housing Commission Member Compensation.
Thank you, Supervisor Howe. Um, so it, it came up in this last, um, end of two thousand twenty-one. Forms were sent out for housing commission members to fill out so that they could be paid for their service, um, to the housing commission, um, which includes their attendance at meetings, much like other committees are paid, their, um, committee members are paid for their meeting attendance. Um, one of the forms came back to us and it was noted that the, the ordinance that we had on file prohibited payment of the housing commission members. So after doing some talking, um, with, um, Terry Wood, who serves as a housing commission member, and then Treasurer Wisswasser and, um, Ian School, the executive director, um, it was determined that, and I looked through a lot of minutes books to go back and find these. But back in nineteen, or excuse me, January eighteenth, nineteen eighty-eight, um, it was determined by the board at that time, led by Supervisor Brooke, that the housing commission be paid for their service, and that, um, motion, um, carried at that time with only one day. Then later, um, Treasurer Wisswasser was helpful in pointing me towards, um, a meeting that he participated in back in September fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, when they increased, um, pay, and then they clarified that all committees were being paid. So based on this information, I would like, um, the consensus of this board, the support of this board, to go ahead and to pay the housing commissioners for their, um, participation in meetings from December two thousand twenty through November two thousand twenty-one. And then in addition, um, I would like to, um, Supervisor Howe was gracious enough to put together a, an amendment for the ordinance that would make the ordinance correct to what was act, what is actually being carried out at this time. So it would nullify that portion where it says that they'll serve without compensation. So we would bring that back for introduction and first reading at the February seventh meeting, but I think the most important part at this time is that we go ahead and be able to pay those members for the meetings they attended.
Yes, again.
December twenty twenty.
Okay.
Through November twenty twenty-two.
And then what we're looking at, obviously, is from, well, you're like, December twenty-one?
So they get paid for December twenty-one when they get their twenty twenty-two payment. It's always off, it's, the payments are issued in November, so we're only able to take through their November attendance. So every year it goes back to December before.
Okay. So then for twenty twenty-two, we'd have to be retroactive.
It's December from twenty, it, it'll be, it'll be December twenty twenty-one through November of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. So each year we get to do that?
We already do that every year.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm saying we don't have to do an ordinance change once that's done, that's taken care of.
Right.
Yeah.
The ordinance just puts into place what we're currently doing.
Right.
When did they stop paying the members?
Just this last year.
Oh, okay. How did, how did they decide to do that?
So that's what I explained was that we received an email back from one of the, the housing commissioners that we had sent a form to. And, um, it was clarified at the time, according to the ordinance, that they, they served without compensation. So they were not paid, and at the time I didn't have a full understanding of everything that became apparent after that time.
And then when I was on there, they paid us.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Steve knew that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, he's saying, well, you know, we do this because we have certain things, but.
Yeah.
The information that was in the file, and that, that was me, operated on what this resolution wasn't there, that they had changed the compensation.
Okay.
All it said was there's no compensation for serving. So when Leo came on and when Jerome, I think is coming on this, tomorrow in fact, um, they fully understood they wouldn't get compensation. But now, of course, that's a whole different ballgame. That's how.
And Terry, Terry Wood had called and said, I was, I was looking for my check and I thought maybe I missed it and, and it was realized that.
And I thought she was there because there was no compensation, so.
So we did, we did a little digging after we got that phone call. And Treasurer Wisswasser and I had a conversation, we talked with Anne Scholes and Terry and, and were able to put all the pieces together, that they've been essentially being paid since back to nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah.
So hopefully that information will get to me to get into the file, so it's there that, yes, they do get compensation. Okay?
I'm not sure tonight will be handled. Ain't even put in the files probably.
Yes.
Nobody, it didn't stop getting paid, you just haven't been paid yet for twenty, November twentieth. December twentieth, November twenty-one. But that's, no, they haven't.
Okay. And the new business? Now, oh, so another discussion with that?
Um, I didn't hear any objections to paying them, so we'll go ahead and issue that payment to them and then we'll bring back your ordinance amendment on February seventh.
And once that's done, then it becomes official.
Yep. You are correct.
Okay. All right. Lack of a quorum. Which is new business fourteen B, committee meeting, lack of quorum, member paid. That was mine. It came to my attention that there had been a question when a quorum was not made and there was no notification that there was no quorum, should that member be paid? Because they come to the building to meet, but nobody's there. So that's what that has to do, is whether or not you get paid.
Yeah.
The quorum's been called, but you haven't been notified. In other words, the chair knows that no one's gonna be there, but the individual wasn't contacted to say that nobody was coming. Apparently, everybody else had been contacted, but the one. So the question is, if a quorum is, is called, or you know there's not a quorum, but you haven't been notified, do you still get paid for being here?
Does everybody get paid for being there or just that one person?
No, it would be just that one person for not being notified, took the time and the effort to be here. Everybody else understood, or at least had been notified.
And they didn't get paid?
And they wouldn't get paid because of the quorum.
Nobody got paid.
But the one who didn't know that there wasn't a quorum and did show up, and I couldn't answer that question because I didn't know.
Well, if you're not gonna pay, if you're not gonna pay, the rest of you certainly gotta pay one.
I was gonna say during, in, in my time, and this is just in a very, no, ten years, if there's no meeting, there's no payment.
Yeah.
If you know there's no meeting, but what if you don't know there's not a meeting?
And doesn't our, our, our payment, doesn't our, our meeting attendance policy say that it has to be, it talks specifically about a meeting, it doesn't talk about payment. It talks about meeting, you, the, the members would be paid for meetings attended.
Correct, that's right.
And if you don't have people there to have a meeting, then I guess the terms of meeting to attend, then you don't get paid.
Okay. No, my, the question is.
Is that too simple or is it?
No, it's not simple, but that's okay. It's okay, it's in your mind, which is okay.
Right.
For me, there was a question, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've come to make two meetings that, uh, we didn't know till the last second.
Correct.
That they weren't, that people weren't coming.
But there were more people there.
Yeah.
The question that came to me was that no one came because everybody knew except this one, so it's really on the chair. That, that's where it falls. It falls on the chair for notifications, but.
To be helpful is, how did everybody know if one person not know?
Because she wasn't told.
Well, was everybody told by email or how did this person not get the message?
I have no clue.
How did they not get the message? Because when they were rearranging meetings, said I'm supposed to attend, I get an email.
Sure. So it's the chair that needs to be discussed and said, okay.
Well, I, I don't know how somebody didn't get notified when everybody else did.
Because they're not told. Well, we should know that, yes. Nobody told. There wasn't, there was an information snay, sort of like. Is that too simple?
Well, I, I agree with you, wish you were sure, there wasn't a meeting, nobody gets paid. It's that simple.
So even if you come and you haven't been told, I mean, I don't know, that's, that, I was a little stumped by it because it was like, well, why weren't you told? Well, I wasn't told. And I came and no one was here. So she called and found that there was no meeting because there wasn't gonna be a quorum. So she's sitting in the parking lot, she has to call to find out there isn't a quorum. So that's the question, do you get paid? I don't know the answer to that. If you're told, obviously, I, I get it.
What committee is this?
This was from the senior services, senior services advisory board.
And how many people are on that board?
Nine, no, no.
No, there's seven on it.
Seven, we're looking.
They're trying to put two more on it.
Yeah. They're looking to expand there.
They had a lot of trouble during COVID. Yeah, I'm on that committee. Does that mean I get another check? Yahoo! I can buy gas.
There you go.
No, they, uh, we, late calls. People would call late and say that they weren't coming, and so you'd end up with, uh, a, a, four sitting there, three sitting there. I think last time we had three. And, uh, nobody knew, they'd tell the last second that Sarah wasn't coming.
Right, but everybody's here under, under the assumption you're gonna have a meeting. That's, that's kind of the question. So I don't, I don't know.
Maybe we need to set up some guidelines and educate.
Educate the chairs as to, that was one of my thoughts.
Well, Karen will get the call, her tailor, and, uh, by the time they get a hold of Judy and she gets a hold of everybody else, it takes time. And somebody might decide late.
Sometimes. I mean, like Al wasn't going to attend the last meeting and he notified me, so I notified Judy. So either they're gonna notify, um.
They don't notify the chair, they can.
It's possible that they notify either or both or none.
Well, probably not.
That's a lot of options.
That's the question.
Yeah.
You know? If there's no notification to the individual, then, I mean, I don't know. So, and again, this is for discussion, so there's no, I don't know if I'll bring it back or not with action. Right now, it's a discussion.
Maybe you ought to bring it back and ask the township board, review the whole meeting attendance policy thing for an interesting evening and conversation.
As you sit and told me your thumbs, will that work?
Well, now, I don't, you're gonna solve it.
No, that's, I, I.
I'm gonna solve it by just ignoring it, I mean, that's.
Well, that's.
You gotta make a stance here.
You have to make a stance, exactly. And all of those are stats.
The township board gets paid whether they, whether they have a meeting or they don't have a meeting, I believe, am I not right?
They're all gonna suck, yep.
I never.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And so I, I'm thinking that, um, but on the other side, according here, you have such things as special board meetings.
Correct.
Where, where some of these committees would have a special board meeting and they maybe have more than one or two a month or whatever, where they have more than they could. The township board, on the other hand, doesn't get paid that way. Doesn't matter where you have five meetings this month or one, you're gonna get paid the same amount of money. And, and so, I mean, you may want to look at this and, and talk about it and, uh, make for an interesting evening and conversation, I mean, if it's nothing else, that's what you feel you need to do.
Well, there's a question that came up, if, if the chair is not responding, I mean, how is, maybe the question's not, they're not responding. Question would be is, are they responding in a proper manner? Maybe that's so that all their members have been informed? Maybe that's, okay. So the issue to bring it back for review, I think makes sense.
I think there's a policy from, um, one supervisor, previous supervisor, Jack Phillips was here, there was a problem with people missing multiple meetings in a row, and I think he developed a policy, um, that said if you miss more than two or three in a certain time period, then it would go to the supervisor for, um, the con, conversation basically with that person to see is this, why is this happening and should you resign from that committee?
Right.
Um, or should you continue in your service? So I think there's, there's that policy, but this may be an element that we add to that policy.
Does that policy give, does, I guess I haven't seen that. Does it say anything about excuses? Because the chair can excuse forever.
Yes, there's, there's.
They can excuse you any number of times.
Absences and they're clarified in there.
So it's, the chair has to be a non-excused reason for that to happen.
The, the chair?
Right. In other words, if the chair are excused.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're.
I had that on.
It pops out, that's okay.
Do you mind if I comment?
No, go ahead. I know we don't have a.
This happens maybe twice a year at the planning commission because people have unexpected problems that come up, but we still continue to have a meeting, we just don't take any action or votes. But we still meet and discuss various topics of, that would normally be discussed on the agenda or maybe even not relevant to the agenda or relevant to the general planning commission, um, meetings.
Okay, no.
But it's, well, but occasionally it does happen at the very last minute.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what I'm asking with the policy is if it's excused, there's three excused absences, do you still get that announced or sent to the supervisor or is it three unexcused?
I, I can't tell. I haven't, we'll share that policy with you and, and refresh. I actually share it with everyone, but we'll refresh.
Nope, that, that makes sense. Thank you, John.
Our, our policy, and it's not formal, is if you miss three consecutive meetings, we talk to you, oh, do you really want to be a planner or not?
Whether it's excused or not?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And we are going to go to fourteen's new business B, items for action, low income household assistance program.
Uh-huh. And Supervisor Howe, we were notified by the Capital Area Community Services Department of Cook County Service Center that their agency was recently, um, allowed, oh, excuse me, they recently received funds to assist low-income households with delinquent water and or sewer bills. And they asked Bath Township to participate in this program, and there's some forms, which I included in the packet, that Treasurer Wisswasser and I would probably have to fill out in order to participate in this program. The first part of the packet is the, um, it's basically a flyer for the program, and it's actually administered through the Michigan Department of Helping Human Services. So they would, in, in our case, because we don't have, um, water payments here, um, they would be able to use their funds, uh, for people that qualify for this program and for Bath, if Bath participated in this program, to pay for past due sewer bills. So we brought this to you tonight for some discussion and for action on whether or not to participate in this program for assisting lower-income residents in community assistance.
You said we have no, people with no water bills?
Well, we don't, the township doesn't.
Oh, that's right, it goes for the water and light.
Yeah. So the rural water and light would have to participate in this program in order to help people, um, pursue these funds.
Right.
So for us, it would be our sewer servants.
But we do have, or do we not have, or we would know, we can ask that question, whether or not they're low income?
We would not be the determining factor of that. So the Capital Area Community Services Program would determine if they qualify for the program and then they get paid their past due bill.
What's the downside to this program?
I don't see one.
Okay.
We, we, we get payment, they get system.
Do they reimburse it, turn side or?
Yeah, it seems like they do, yes.
It looks like they do. I don't, I don't think there's a downside.
It sounds like it's a, it's a good.
Our ordinance follows the, the parcel number, um, and even it doesn't get reimbursed, um, it goes back to special assessment taxes on households.
You have a problem telling the paperwork out?
No, I don't know how they did it.
I know.
I'd rather, I'd rather do it on the computer and type it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sometimes.
My typing skills are a lot better than my handwriting skills, I'm a little lazy while creating.
Sometimes there is an issue with having to do paperwork, but there's not an issue with it. Um, is there any other discussion? We have a second on the motion.
Could someone make a moment?
Well, that's what, when you started out with discussion, is not a motion?
How about a motion to approve the low-income household water assistance program?
We support it.
Is there any discussion? I think we've already pretty much.
Okay. Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Ms. Howe?
Yes. Okay. The next items for action is that, that we've talked about before, the advisory committee, the senior services advisory board. Okay. That's a mouthful. I thought someone would be here tonight, so I guess I'll pass these out. She does. Seth? Brian had some questions that, I think you're.
This is the wrong thing.
Did you get a copy?
This is the housing commission.
Senior services, oh, I'm sorry.
Now you don't share what they might have.
No, she, okay, I'll put them in the middle of the floor.
The housing commission one?
No, this is housing commission compensation. This one, Brian, Brian had some questions and he said, do we, he said, do we applicants for the current board vacancies, we have so that we could shift people to expand positions? It seems like we cannot yet fill our current vacancies without creating two new ones. So he's obviously saying that we don't have enough people to fill our committees, so therefore why don't we expand it to two more? Committees are meant to be advisory and shouldn't be managing projects. If this committee is managing so many projects that it needs additional help, that seems like a red flag.[1763.51] Staff manages projects. That was my term that I used, so, this is why I'm hoping that Judy would be here tonight. Committee members advise. Are we de facto approving of the level of engagement in township business by advisory committee? At face value, more volunteers seem like a win to employ to everyone, but from my vantage point, there seems that it could be problematic. I believe I brought up some of the same concerns that we expanded the last committee, which was the arts committee, earlier this year. Actually, it was earlier last year. Since I won't be there, I hope these questions or points will be made as part of the discussion. So, he's got one, you got, you're reading, okay. So, discussion. What they're asking for, because apparently, at one point, I was told, and this is what I was told, that the committee had nine members, and that for some reason...
It was enlarged to nine members.
...came seven.
For about two years.
Okay.
And then we had trouble keeping people, and it got hard to keep at nine, so it got back to seven.
Yeah, so it was seven originally. It was expanded in 2014, when we did the kitchen expansion and senior center remodel project. And then when that was complete, it couldn't be maintained, you're correct, so it went back to seven. So it was only enlarged at that time because of the enormity of that project.
Okay. Because what I, what I was told, and when it came to me to ask, was the fact that they did much better, you would know that, Al, because you were there, they're much better with nine than they did with seven. So, that's why they'd like to go back.
Well, we had so much more work at that time.
Okay. Oh, okay, so you're saying they don't have that much work?
No, I'm not saying that, it's, they're trying to help the seniors in the community. And there, it is a big project. But you've gotta get a person that is willing to get into that portion of it, instead of just sat there and talk about the food.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's like this large umbrella of helping seniors, and under that umbrella you have...
Right.
Okay.
So generally, they focus, I'll just, my two cents is generally, they focus on the seniors that come to the center.
Not on the seniors that we see?
So, it was the intent when it was created, to my understanding, because I've read the minutes there, it was, the intent was to help the seniors in the community, and that's why it's not called the Senior Center Advisory Board, it's Senior Services. Because it was meant to have a far wider reach than just the fifty-five, sixty people that come for lunch. So it was meant to help people, shunnings or people, other people that might need services at different times of the year, or at different times of the month.
So one of the projects with one of the members would be to search out how many seniors we have in that township?
She has that figure.
No, we probably have that either from census data and from registered voters, we would have an idea of... But it's reaching them to see what it is they need assistance with, or if they need assistance at all.
Okay.
Yeah. Who wants nine members?
The only one I know is Judy, to help her with...
Judy didn't tell me.
Yeah, I don't know who told you.
Dennis did.
Huh?
Dennis and I talked to him.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he was so familiar.
The biggest problem is to reach, you gotta have somebody with the desire to help, like Judy, the seniors. And you go to their, I mean, she wants to reach out to all of them and find out if they're... Some of them have called, like, I can't, I don't have a water heater, and I don't have any money to pay for it. Is there a, some organization that would put one in? And Judy has that list of people that do that kinda stuff. Whether you need to walk up to your door so that you can get in, or the wheelchair or something, it's to help people that don't, that are low-income.
All right, their revenue comes from their dinners or from their lunches?
It comes from us.
Yeah, well, it's like, so, what do you mean?
And then that money goes back to help the township.
The contribution that we make to it.
Yeah.
Through the budget.
Right.
So, does that need to be increased because of what you're saying, or is it...
No, it's money outside of the township that has been, is given to these people.
Like they might qualify for two-state treatment, or Capital Area Community Services, or some benefits.
So they're state programs?
It could be, or money.
Got Medicaid, they qualify for Medicaid, Medicaid will have been some of these...
So, county or state, okay.
And could they call two-on-one for help?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, yep. So, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you don't need to expand to nine, seven's enough, is that what, and that's...
If you can find good people.
Because I have, I'm looking for the additional two, because he just mentioned, this was just mentioned.
If they're, if they're willing to spend the time, it, they need them.
So they do, so they do need...
But they need good people.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna spend their time that it takes to do that, all of the job.
Their board's not full right now, is it?
Well, yeah, we, Sarah sat down, but we put...
Sarah's place, that's why, yeah. That's why, so it is seven, so it is full, it's seven. What they're asking is for the nine, which would be two additional...
Yeah.
Two additional people. Well? Okay, guys, any other thoughts? All right, if done, then I guess we'll take a vote on it. Well, Al, is that, that's an item for action.
You have to make a motion first.
So, just make a motion, okay. Just, I'll make a motion, you're gonna make a motion, go ahead.
I just wanna, if the persons, I think Judy should, Judy and along with Karen, should interview these people to see if they have the ability to, or the background to do this kinda work. Because it's, it isn't just...
Well, okay, the interview part bothers me, that's because when you're a volunteer to an advisory committee, and you're interviewed, and you tell them you don't have the expertise to do it, so...
Well, what good are they gonna be to the committee?
Well, that's, that's the question. That's why when they're appointed, they're already asked, are you going to have the time to do this, will you do it? The commitment has to be there, these are, again, these are volunteers, this isn't like you're interviewing for a position, because if you did that, you wouldn't have a board.
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, is that, and there's a little bit, and I agree with you, there's a little bit of this that I'm, that I'm not clear on, because that's, that's the young lady's job, that also is the coordinator over there, is to assist people when they have needs, whether it be continent supplies, or medical equipment, or, that's supposed to be part of her role too, is to help facilitate their needs. So, I guess if they're contacting Judy directly, those could, I don't understand why those aren't being passed along to the person in that position. I've not heard her say that she's overwhelmed and can't get to all the needs that are being asked of her, so...
Yeah, I don't...
I'm a little confused as to why...
I've got a suggestion, I wanna make a motion, but what can I do?
Her name, who's the?
Ms. Matsumoto.
Yeah, but she goes by...
Brittany.
Brittany, yeah.
But she's the programs and services coordinator, so, she's not there just to facilitate what's happening at the center. People can call the senior center and request assistance, and then she can guide them to the proper resource, so...
So it's not Judy, this is who it should be, it shouldn't go to Judy?
It should be this, this person, because that's her job.
Do they, do they under, does the advisory board understand that?
Oh, yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least I do. I can't speak with the rest of them, but I, I understand.
You sit there, that's, you're supposed to go bad.
Certainly.
No, hang on, I know the motion's wrong.
I have a question for you, can I make this motion? I need to know.
Okay.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna go, if I understand what you're hearing here, you're gonna go from a seven-member board to a nine-member board.
That's what we need to ask.
And then you, you throw in volunteer, but actually, they're not a volunteer, they're actually gonna be a full-fledged board member, who will be a voting board member, nine voting board members, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what that means is, is that you're gonna change your quorum from a four-three to a five-four.
That's correct.
And so if you don't have votes enough for a seven-member to get to where you need to get to, this will take and solve that problem, and you have more strength in numbers. That's kinda the way it works at Al. To vote on things that they wanna do.
Yeah.
If, if they're there.
If they're there.
And that's what you're saying, okay.
You know, I'm just gonna kinda play this little bit state, and Judy's not here this evening, okay?
No, yep.
So I'm gonna make my recommendation that we delay the decision on this for a couple of weeks, until we can get more information back, exactly how this is gonna work. That's my motion.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Oh, well, your motion is to delay it, question is, how long do you want, you're saying information...
I'm gonna have another match two weeks.
So technically, seven, right, you're seven, yeah. So, does everybody understand the motion? Motion is to delay this issue until the next meeting, February seventh.
Yeah.
Okay. You still want a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, one hundred and fifteen, which is the superintendent's report. Thank you, Supervisor Howe, speaking of committees, the zoning board of appeals was to take place tonight, and they were unable to hold their meeting. They have a couple of members that are wintering in other states, and it's come to my attention today that there are two alternates. One has resigned, and apparently, the other one did ask not to be renewed, so...
Four, not me.
I'm sorry.
Did I overlook anything? Who resigned and who?
So apparently, Robert Rand resigned, and Bob Taylor asked not to be renewed. So they were not able to conduct business tonight, so I would just ask that if there are any applications sitting for that group, that somebody be reappointed, or appointed, excuse me, there is business before them that they are not able to undertake and a developer's, and a holding period for a month at least, until they're able to have a forum to meet. And that typically can happen at this time of year, and some people do winter out of the state, sure. But that, that committee is supposed to have alternates for that reason, and none of that was able to take place, so, go ahead.
You have two positions to fill on that board now?
At least, to my understanding, yep. And I don't know if Paul Shatine didn't notify someone, or he wasn't aware, or...
He's out of state.
And he's out of state, so I'm unclear how that happened, and who's been communicated with and who hasn't been communicated with. But the, but the hard part is that somebody paid an amount of money to come before the zoning board of appeals and have their, their issue determined, and they weren't able to have that determined this evening. So it's been pushed back until February, which it is a winter month, I'm sure it will work, but if we were in the height of construction season, it would be problematic, for sure, so... So I just wanted to bring that up and ask if there were any...
Did Rob say why he resigned?
It appears that he felt though, as though being an alternate, he never knew whether he was gonna be able to participate, or, and felt as though maybe his expertise wasn't being utilized in the way that he wanted it to be utilized. And I, and I don't know either gentleman, so, I'm saying what I've been told. And if that's incorrect, I apologize to either one, but it sounds like he wanted to have a larger role in the board.
He's good, he's so good.
Who's the board rep of the ZBA? Jason. Jason, I'm right.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Jason. So he, he would've had to...
Jason would've been there.
How many?
Well, he's...
He would've had to, yeah, he would, he's not here, but he would've had conflict, so I don't know, he would've had to choose between this board and that board, but I'm not sure that would've solved the issue either, so...
The alternates have been a great benefit to the zoning board of appeals for years, so hopefully, we can keep some alternates there, which is a little bit, but unusual. Some nights you get to vote, and some nights you don't, but they have been a very big benefit to us over time.
And that's, the last time I believe Bert spoke on that, he indicated that as well, so...
Is there some way of changing the alternate, then, to make them more, because they come to every meeting, but they don't know if they're even gonna be there, so, I mean, do they get, I'm assuming they get paid...
There's a lot of communication in that group...
Whatever that means.
With the chair, communicating to people, such and such is gonna be absent, you're on deck tonight, they talk all the time.
Oh, no, that's what I mean, tonight.
Yeah.
So, they're always there, which they're very, you're right.
No, they're not, they're, well, they come most of the time, yeah.
Yeah, they do, because they never know who's gonna be there.
Well, yeah, they do, because the chair communicates if he's gonna have, have a person absent.
Okay.
Yeah.
How did, how did, when there's Robert Rand, how did he end up being an alternate? Did he get replaced?
I'm, I'm unclear.
I thought he was a full-time member, or is he not?
He's not a permanent, at least as long as I've been here.
He's always been an alternate.
I didn't know that.
Yep.
We're knowledgeable for that.
He's very knowledgeable for that, that's exactly right.
I thought he was a full-time board member also.
No, he's not.
I was gonna reach out and suggest maybe he considered planning, I think there's a vacancy in the plan.
If you wanna reach out to him, if that's an issue for him, looks like we got a full-time spot available. If that's an issue for him.
For the planning or for the ZBA?
ZBA.
You're talking planning, he's talking ZBA, which is...
The planning, he doesn't wanna be on planning anymore, or CBA. Now I've talked myself into a circle. He doesn't, he doesn't, I know, he doesn't wanna be...
He's comfortable with planning, is he?
No, he does not want to be part of the zoning board of appeals anymore.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I was going to recommend to him that he apply for the planning commission.
Oh, really? Okay.
I mean, if he wants a, a, a spot that utilizes, you know, he can apply and or he can consider him for that, and I'm not saying he's not medic, I'm just saying if he wants to be utilized...
He's very good.
He, he might wanna consider that.
But you do have a full-time position open on the ZBA.
No, it's only the two, it's only the two alternates that are out.
Oh, okay.
Both these are alternates.
All right.
I'm sorry if I...
Well, I, I, I was, I was in the whole conversation, and he left because he was an alternate, so...
Did Rob say why he doesn't want to be appointed?
I didn't even know until today that he was no longer, so our planner reached out to him over the weekend to see if he could make the meeting, and he said, my term expired and I no longer wanna be reappointed, so, or appointed. So, he indicated over the phone that he did not wish to continue.
So as part of this conversation, Dan Kramer's on the ZBA, Jason's on the ZBA, Paul Shatine's on the ZBA. I'm missing the four.
Daryl, Daryl.
Okay, those are the four members that are there already. Okay, a lot of experience there.
But you need two alternates.
Yes, you do.
So you need, they can put something on it.
Well, that comes back to the policy...
Whatever thing, you know, we need to hold from the ZBA.
But that comes back, the only reason you use the alternate is if one of the members isn't there. And if you have three excused absences or unexcused, that's the question, because you can be excused forever, never, never, and that causes a problem, because you lean on your alternate...
Right.
...to do it, so...
This may be the first time we've bumped into this, that I'm aware of, yeah, it probably could've happened before...
First time I've ever...
In history, it could've been just the perfect storm of people on holiday, the MLK holiday, pushed it to a, to a different night. Is it normally Tuesday? No, we got pushed, oh, we got pushed. Okay, so we got pushed to Tuesday night, which would've prevented probably Jason from going. I just think there was a bunch of things that came into play this time, and then with the expiration and the resignation, I think it just, that was the final.
How would you like to advertise for the membership for the zoning board of appeals?
We generally put those in the newsletter, we generally put them on Facebook, the website. And I, and I don't know if Supervisor Howe has any applications, so...
No, because I don't appoint, I don't.
I'm sorry?
The board appoints, I don't, Supervisor doesn't appoint, ZBA.
Or if you're burned, you're one. Or confirm your point.
No.
But you still bring, but you still bring applications.
No. Okay. When you check the attorney on how it's done, ZBA was one of them, that the board appoints. They bring.
But you still get applications and bring them forward.
You receive the applications all the time.
Okay. No, I don't. Because I don't appoint.
You recommend someone, and then the board confirms them.
No, that's the same as appointing them. The board has to do, because they do it all the time. I mean, they have to accept who I bring forward to you, accept or reject. I don't bring forward to accept or reject.
You brought forward John Wright tonight.
Right.
And it's the same thing.
No, it's not. ZBA is different. Oh, okay. I'll bring the opinion.
What is your, as a supervisor, what is your duty? As a duty, what's yours? You're a.
Sorry.
Help me with the word. I'm having a moment. You're an ex officio of all committees.
No, that's, no, that's her. That's me. But I'm not.
She's not.
And she's not even, though, as a supervisor, I thought that was still part of her.
It's listed in mine.
And there are certain.
She gets the application. So the question.
But you're not, you're not, you're not an ex officio of all these, so you're not able to step in and replace and be, and participate.
I need your line.
No.
Need your line. I'm not a voting member. I can speak, but I can't vote.
That's, you could speak.
So who takes the applications?
The board.
I don't.
I don't understand the.
Not the zoning.
They do all the other committees, but the zoning.
Well, there's a couple of them. Zoning is one. Board of Review is another. But you do have that coming up fairly soon, Bob Ivey. Those were officially stated that the board does the appointment.
But you still bring forward.
No. No, I understand.
We agree with the.
Well, he does if you don't.
You do.
I don't. I'm a treasurer.
That's, you're a board member.
Well, then you're a board member too. Why would I do that?
That's absolutely correct.
Is this written somewhere?
Yes, it is. The attorney.
We have an attorney opinion.
They have an attorney opinion. We didn't make sure. If I'm not understanding it, please let me know.
All right.
My understanding is that those two in particular are ones that I don't have anything to do with. That's why you went to.
You proposed a slate of candidates. I'll call them candidates, because I don't know what to call them, for Board of Review.
No.
You did?
I did, and then.
And they were rejected?
And then, no, I had one.
Okay.
And then it was told, that's when it was asked, this board asked for the attorney opinion on who appoints and who doesn't appoint.
Okay.
And that's when the opinion came out.
We'll circulate the attorney opinion.
Yeah, I think that. And if I'm wrong on that, please let me know, but I think so.
I think so, but.
I know, I know. I've got it.
Okay.
I have them in my notes.
We'll circulate that, and we'll figure that out.
No, do.
My other item is that I have signed the agreement to engage with the audit services of Siegfried and Crandall again for this year. And they are scheduled to come in during the first week of April, if I'm correct.
People forces mayor, because there's nobody here the last day of, or I think the first four days of March.
Do our pre-audit services, and then Siegfried and Crandall will do our audit onsite. They usually sit in the conference room for a couple of days, and they collect materials from accounts payable and accounts receivable. Go ahead. You have a question?
I do. Mostly for the treasurer. A pre-audit, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Try me again.
I didn't say that. She didn't.
I did. Okay.
The thought I should do, they refer to the financial statements.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. Okay. That's, thank you.
Or commonly in the theater they work in, they'll also refer to it as audit prep.
Oh.
That's what I was calling pre-audit services, but, okay. Audit prep.
Just financial statement help.
Yeah.
Financial statements or audit prep.
They're audit prep.
In the industry, they'll refer to it as audit prep. They have an audit prep team.
And that would be the.
Last week if it was.
No. Who, who, who does that?
Me, because there's.
That's what I thought. Okay. That just kind of rolls off the tongue, doesn't it?
What's that?
They've changed their name a lot, so it's been hard to.
Yes, it just kind of, okay.
It's related to my name.
Call me, call me. All right, got it. That's what was a little.
And last but not least, unless you have more questions?
Nope.
Okay. Last but not least is COVID. Obviously, I looked at numbers today. We're up over 18,000 cases per day for the last couple of days, and we all know that Omicron is spreading like wildfire. Go ahead.
Is that the state or the county?
Often.
All of it, all the above. I mean, because you have, you have two people that are not here tonight as a result.
No.
And we've had employees that have been exposed and confirmed at times with COVID. So we continue on a daily basis to struggle with keeping everyone healthy, keeping everyone safe distances apart, and masking and sanitizing. So please, go ahead.
No, you joke about that, but the state has exaggerated numbers. The county has.
Oh, the 18,000 is the state.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, group of work, that's working. We've got.
Yeah, but the last time when I updated the senior services advisory committee, I think we were up 36% in the county over, week over week. So it's prevalent in the county as well.
Okay. No, that's, because those numbers make a difference.
Yes. And so we are going to be looking at, and it'll come back to you for a policy, but we are going to be looking at, right now we have to send everyone out to the county to be tested, and it takes time. So other townships are moving towards procuring tests that they can use in-house. So if you feel like if someone's been exposed or is unsure, they can take a home test, which will provide them with some results that can be confirmed by the health department if needed. But we are at a point where almost daily someone is exposed and needs to be tested. So whether it's a police officer or a member of our senior center staff, it's been pretty prevalent. So we will be taking additional actions to make sure that we're healthy and make sure that we can get testing. Those that have our health insurance through PHP can get, are going to be receiving home health tests from PHP and are allowed a certain amount. The problem is, is that not all of our employees are full-time employees or take our insurance. So we have to make accommodations to make sure everybody's safe and that we're not exposing people to COVID.
Are we giving home tests? Is that what you're?
At this time, that's what I'm looking at, is procuring an FDA-approved test, and then being able to distribute them for purposes of testing when those situations arise.
So someone could come to the township and get a test?
Not someone, just employees. No, this is for, this is for employees.
Okay.
Employees don't have to take and test with township. They can test with their own medical.
They can. They can, but.
They so choose.
If they so choose to. What we've been told by PHP is that PHP is no longer gonna provide those for free. Over the last two years, they've been provided for free, and now they're gonna be charged against your health insurance. So it may be. Yeah, it may be desirable for some people not to go through insurance to be tested, and it may be desirable for some to continue doing that. So.
And as for the quick test, or is that for the antibiotic test?
The quick test. No, you have, it's expensive.
It's my.
My opinion is the one you want.
It's my understanding that it's, it's all of the above.
So this is just an extra option?
It's an extra option. I don't want people to come to the township because they don't want to go get tested somewhere. So my intent is to provide them a way to test at home and get an idea if they've been exposed or positive, and then follow up with their healthcare provider.
Once they test positive, and say they do this at home, they follow you, and they say they tested positive COVID. Do they have to somehow send you some sort of proof?
In the past, we've not required proof of anybody, but we've been usually contacted by the health department. So we could require them to go get an additional test. Go ahead.
Which at that time they had before, anyway.
And if they do miss work, so I have to take a sick time now?
At this time, if they are vaccinated and boosted, they do not. I'm sorry.
I just swallowed it. I got a cough drop in my mouth. I do have a question.
We should understand that some of these tests are right, they're building a seven-day window before you get the results. So if you had a rapid home test here, we get those results immediately.
Yeah, within 15 minutes.
Within 15 minutes.
Yeah.
So you can, you can send somebody out for a test, and they might not get results for seven days. So it would be an advantage to have the tests here for people that got exposed, so they could get, they could take the test. They would know in 15 minutes if they tested positive.
As long as it's not a false company.
Here's one last question. Do you have a policy on coming back after you test positive?
We've been utilizing CDC guidelines.
So they have to have another, they have two meditated.
No, no, because it is, you're up to 90 days after you have had COVID, you can test positive for COVID.
Okay.
So testing is not a confirmation of whether or not you are okay to return to work. The CDC has been saying it's, now it's five days.
Okay.
It's two days without a fever and without medication aiding the reduction of your fever and improving the symptoms.
Okay.
But.
The reason I mention it is they had a, about this is one of the firms I do business with, and they have to have two, and that firm you have to have two meditative COVID tests to go back to the office.
Okay.
So that's why I asked.
Okay. That helps. Our information from the county health department is that you can continue to test positive for up to 90 days. So that would leave somebody out of work for 90 days if they couldn't.
Should we contact the health department and see if that's been updated?
I will. Yeah, because it's part of putting together the policy around all of the CDC guidelines, health unit services guidelines, and county guidelines. So.
I have the medative information, but I was informed Hawaii is our first state, that you have to have your vaccines to enter the state. You have to have both vaccines and be boosted. You're our first state to do that. But I haven't vetted that information. I just got it once.
That's all I have. Unless you have questions, we'll meet.
I got a question. How is our police and fire applications coming for positions?
I believe that we've received five or six at this time. I spoke to Chief Linda Mulder this morning, and he's looking to set up interviews in the next couple of weeks. So I think he's looking to pretty quickly get interviews.
How about Mr. Snyder's?
He has not posted for that position yet.
Oh, he hasn't? Okay. Thank you.
And we also, to that end, unless you have a question about police and fire?
Well, I do, but that's.
Go ahead. No, because I'm gonna go on a recreation, so just in thinking about that. Go ahead.
That shook my memory. The budget. They're going to be doing a budget meeting in their February meeting. And you are going to have for them a packet.
Yep.
My term, I used, but that was.
No, that's correct. Information on the mileage.
Okay.
Yep.
Is, well, was the mileage? Well, I thought it was their budget, just mileage.
It's the mileage.
Okay.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be assessing whether or not the mileage should be increased and how much.
Are they going to get that earlier, or than their meeting, or the day of their meeting?
They're gonna get that a week before.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, the.
And it'll be public knowledge information, so you can have a copy too.
I wouldn't ask for that.
No, and actually, that same information will come to you after their meeting, because it will be your decision ultimately how we proceed with that as a board. Recreation, we had, how many applicants? Over 50. We truly had probably 10 good applicants. And with, along with members of the farmers market and parks and recreation board, we narrowed it down to five that we've reached out to, to interview. So we're in the process of setting those up as well.
Are any of them bath residents?
We had, I think, one was a Bath High School graduate. Seven, which apparently this is the level to attain, is that they have their degrees in recreation from Central Michigan University. So there are a couple of few that have degrees from Central.
Oh, you specify the.
No, we just sent, we just sent a bachelor's degree, but everybody seemed to get really excited when they saw.
Central doesn't.
Central's program, or they had a bachelor from Central. So I never did that before, so.
No.
But everybody got pretty excited.
State is the program, too. But I'm prejudiced, so.
So thank you for listening to me. If you don't have any other questions, I will stop.
All right, and 16 public statements? You're still good? All right. What did they were comment? Number 17.
I'd like to thank our members from the public for their attendance this evening. Can you stay for the whole meeting?
Yeah. Treasurer Wissler.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna take just a couple of minutes. I wanted to bring to the township board of trustees' attention that, I never liked to, they said they want to say that, that Otters recently bestowed on two of our Bath High School volleyball players by the Michigan Volleyball Coaches Association. Specifically, acknowledgement and congratulations are in order for student athlete Sophia Westpal, Westpal. I think I said it right. W E S T P A L, Westpal. She's a senior. And Annabelle Kuzak, who is a junior. They were both selected in Division III, All-Region Honorable Mentions, for their exemplary efforts put forth as a member of the Bath High School volleyball team. They may not realize it, but they also bring honor to our community. So ladies, thank you so much. Other than that, thank you too for being here. Greatly appreciate it. You're right, you stayed for the whole thing. So kudos. You too get congratulated.
Thanks for staying.
Yeah, thanks for staying. It's kind of a tough period of years, the last two, to get to our meetings and to have at least an audience to talk to. And all you guys stay safe.
Yeah, that's the truth. Now we need to vote to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Thank you for the motion.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge a yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissler?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
I gotta say, you got me all messed up tonight. You went the opposite way with everybody.